Brad, so I was going to present. I will be chairing the meeting this evening. And we're back. So our first thing of the week is on the comment. Two people sign up who will comment. Yeah. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm very sorry. I'm just wondering about realizing that. Today I'm here with different speakers. I'm here to discuss my personal thoughts. We have found your attention that perhaps we have an inspiration. Our group organized a focus before we started inspiration at the college. That's great. The opinion of all of the potential that in fashion and in defense of time of course is the research. Despite opposition, Conley University unveiled a new plan to install even more natural turfs on this platform, which we are fighting as well. This decision made without deep consideration of the concerns raised right now is equally sound. Artificial turf installation is not only close multiple environmental concerns, but also have implications for health and well-being of students and residents. Economically, despite the industry pitches, it's not even a cost-saving measure. Considering installation replacement required every eight to 10 years, and the cost of washing, disinfection, and holding at the end of its life, the use of artificial turf can lead to increased exposure to harmful chemicals such as PFAS, which have been linked to adverse health. Furthermore, protection of artificial turf installations that are majorous present in our community. Multiple municipalities have banned synthetic turf installation, and multiple school districts across the country face lawsuits. There is even one pending federal class action lawsuit in the New Jersey District Hall. More research studies have come out in the past several years highlighting the clear toxicity, environmental harm, high injury rate, and environmental justice concerns. I urge the school district board to reconsider any plans for additional turf installations, if any. Please note that lead certification allows artificial turfs, which is extremely problematic. Relying on certification alone to showcase district sustainability efforts therefore should be questioned. Instead, I encourage you to explore sustainable alternatives that prioritize the health and safety of young athletes, students, and future generations. I've sent a file from an ally in California detailing the recent research. And we have more. And thank you for your time and consideration.
Hello, my name is Anna Grant Weiss. I am a student, I'm a sixth grade student at Boyd Elementary School. And I would like to discuss the issue about the amount of food waste, what we could do to give it to people who really need it. I talked to the people who work in the cafeteria and asked what they did with all the food that was not eaten at the end of the day. And they said they composted it. Composting is a good thing, better for throwing the food out. But I think one thing we could do with it is put it in bags and give it out to food insecure students in District Y. I also think we could get a local organization like Loaves and Fishes to come and take it. I was also doing some research on what happened to cooked food when it gets composted. And some foods that are very fatty or have a lot of dairy slows the composting process down. Composting seems like it would always be a good thing for the environment, but it depends how it's done. When I first had this idea, I talked about it with the principal, but I thought that this could be a good thing to do in all schools of the issue, which is why I've been here. Thank you for letting me propose these ideas to you, and I hope you will take it into consideration.
Hello, for some classes. So, but, you know. So, this probably less for everyone. Um, I just want to thank you both for your advocacy. And I hear these things, and I just wonder what we can do for action. And so when I think of the turf, I remember the conversation coming up at facilities when they were redoing the turf. Like in eight to 10 years before replacement. Maybe that is something we can explore when it's time to replace. Doing something that is more sustainable and better than the environment. And I know, I can't remember who said that the turf was actually okay. I remember asking similar questions, and I can't remember what anyone said. Um, so I wonder if maybe we can talk about that facility and point to it and just get the background to have a better understanding of it. Um, and then Anna, thank you, and I think that's interesting. And I wonder what we can do and who, which committee do we go to to see about composting? Not, I'm sorry, not composting, but better food sustainability and among insured. I'd be for response. Thank you very much, Anna. Thank you for your braveness in coming to the floor.
We do have sustainable, sustainable team members located in every school except for one. So, sustainable team member at Brooklyn School is Carol Hawke. Because throughout the whole school district, we have students as well as educated staff members who are responsible. So, instead of us wanting to be here, we go to your school. They're supposed to have the exact wrong handles and proper. You write and identify the groups that we take on the time.
Karen, do you know who this was funded?
Yes.
This is Anna Krevler. Anna Krevler, I just heard a call from her to discuss that I've got from the father of a school. Asking about sustaining the team.
And Karen, do you know those sustainability teams are connected? Like, Anna said that they're being gathered.
They should be, because we have some discussion.
Yeah, they are connected.
There's a single advocate's week altogether. But we need next week's all moving together from each school once a month to discuss these issues. Happy to share this issue at their next meeting.
I'm sure there are more research to be done about, you know, what's possible with food donation. And I applaud Anna for starting her own research and talking to the folks and talking to the building principals. Coming up, which could happen.
So, Anna, just one thing, but even with that, so you've not had a talk. I did want to give you. So, I have a suggestion. Woman from Slowly Fishes named Christina. She's very hard on family, but she knows a lot about food disconnects. You and your Hannah made a great talk. She told me in the past that sometimes low prices is over set. But with food donations, so, uh, she was over 10 hours basis. Ever spoke. But thank you. Rentings, $50,000 now. It's going to shock anybody who finds itself in a food. Here's one suggestion. Go to the source, Aces.
Yeah, I'll, can you give me something, just one final question? Do, I mean, is where?
They're lacking in food donations too. And the woman who runs it is named Karen, and she's also very nice. So, maybe one Sunday at like 1:00, go down with your parents and see if you can talk to her. That's all I had to say.
Briefly, Anna, it's Christina Culver, C-U-L-V-E-R, at Loaves and Fishes. And Yaya, thank you for reminding us about artificial turf. And we'll put it on the agenda for either the next facilities meeting, which might be a little close now, or the following meeting to just get an update on that. And. Thank you.
I also appreciate all the people who came tonight to public comment. Very, very nice. Um, I actually had one question about when, when we do compost now. Does that happen at the school on our grounds here in a specific place now?
Yeah, we have compost containers in many of our schools. I was just at, on the other, is it LACS the other day? I saw them, I saw them now with the green bags. And when the students come through the food line, they put the compost in the green garbage, uh, green garbage cans with green bags.
Okay.
And then similar practices. The TSC versus comes with any of that.
Oh, okay.
Into something called TIC, which is where it's, uh, they can.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All set to move on to student reps. And I think IHS went first last time. So, you're all by your own.
The LACS Spanish trip is hosting a salsa night on March 22nd at 6:00 PM. And there's going to be dancing lessons and family groups. And other trips will be able to table at the event to raise money for their trips and family groups.
Great, when did you say that one?
March 22nd at 6:00, March 22nd at 6:00 PM.
It also.
I forgot to say this, it also won't be at LACS. I think it's going to be at Fall Creek Elementary School.
Um, we also have our annual infusion week coming up, um, which if you don't already know, is a team of students who works to plan this week for more than two cycles or quarters, if you know them as that. And this is a week where that team of students gets to decide on a social justice theme and then organize and facilitate workshops and other events throughout the week for that. Something specifically exciting this year is we are having a consent rocks concert. Consent is the theme. Um, and that is made up entirely of student talent. And most of the workshops for this week will take place Thursday morning before PBats, which I'll let Oden speak to.
Yeah, so this Thursday, our middle school students are going to be participating in various different literary workshops during the afternoon. Um, meanwhile, juniors like myself and a couple seniors will be presenting our English PBats. And all other high school students are welcome to come and watch the PBats.
Thank you. Okay. Larger complement took reps.
Yeah, they had tennis tryouts. I'm sure they weren't great. Um, okay, so at IHS, we have a social justice week coming up, and we're starting tomorrow with a live streamed assembly. Uh, seventh period, it's not like an in-person assembly, but everybody's just going to watch it in their seventh period class. And this week with Mr. Trumbull, we discussed more vegan food options. It's not just a salad bar in the cafeteria. And we're going to be continuing that discussion with the cafeteria staff and especially Beth Kraus. Um, we also discussed kind of keeping the doors within the quad open, not the central front doors of the building, but the doors within the quad, like after the doors to just kind of facilitate movement throughout the building. And we've also been discussing more study hall spots as the weather gets warmer. Because being stuck inside for a study hall is not really great right now. Um. Go for it.
Thank you. In early April, IHS Student Council is planning an international day. So what this will consist of is a number of booths representing different cultures and groups of people from around the world. And we're hoping to get student volunteers. And we're running this something like carnival scheme is the idea. You'll get tickets and you can take, uh, give those tickets in for food, to play games, to do those kinds of things, themed around different cultures. We already have a number of signups and we'll be sending the form out for general signups to the school very soon, or we might have done it a few days ago.
Um, I don't really have a whole lot to add, but there is a choir concert on Thursday. So if you are interested in going, you should definitely attend. It's going to be a lot of fun, I think. Kaydman's in the choir, you can come hear him sing. Um, yes, I think so, right, Kaydman? Yeah. Okay, all right.
Can I ask a question? Well, this was about the, you said a salsa fundraiser, which kind of salsa? Dancing, okay, just making sure.
Be salsa.
Yes, okay.
Come for the salsa, stay for the salsa.
Yeah, I didn't know if it was like going to be confined to which one went in the hands.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you very much, duty reps. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
I move that we approve all consent agenda items listed in the consent agenda, consideration of accounts, personnel report, students, and minutes of previous meeting as presented.
Second.
By Jill, seconded by Adam. Uh, are there any things on the consent agenda that any of our team members need to speak to or ask questions to?
I have a question, but it's about a specific person. And because we don't have an exec session, it's, I can't raise it in open session, but it's about the specific decision made around a specific employee. And I need to discuss that before I can vote for the consent agenda. So I'm not sure how we do that with no exec.
I think we'll, we pull it out. Uh, so we'll pull the personnel report.
But I don't want to hold it up until we meet again, because there's stuff on it that has to move.
A quick exec session, or we could go into an exec session for this particular thing and then come back.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to do it at the end, or? Do we do it?
That would make sense.
At the end, okay. All right, so we'll pull the personnel report from the consent agenda, and we will go into a brief executive session at the end of the meeting and then come back to act on the personnel report. I think I need a motion to do that.
I make a motion that we, uh, is the right word, table or pull the?
Yeah. Okay, we can put, yeah. And then.
Then we don't have to amend it.
So we just switch the order.
Right, so you make a motion to change the order of the agenda.
Yes.
To have the personnel report, to have an executive session followed by a return to.
Thank you, thank you, Vice.
Executive session before voting.
Yes.
Consent agenda, yes. So we're moving the consent agenda to the end. Right.
Thank you, Vice President, and Karen Yearwood. I make a motion to alter our agenda slightly by moving number four, the consent agenda, to what looks like it would now be number, the new number 11. Prior to that, I would also like to propose we have a brief executive session to discuss a personnel matter.
And at the end of the reg, thank you, thank you. Motion by Eldred and seconded by Adam, all in favor. And just for clarification, uh, prior to, when, at the end of the meeting, I will ask for a motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing the employment history of a particular individual.
Thank you, team, appreciate you all.
That worked back around? Okay. Yes, I am not Dr. Sean Eversley Brown. Um, all right, so now that moves us to Dr. Brown, the superintendent, report and announcements.
Thank you for the opportunity, Ms. Lang, and thank you for your leadership this evening in this role. Uh, I have one important item, and I'll invite Ms. Tucker to come down and help me with that one. And while she's transitioning, uh, I think at the time it's important for me to highlight some of my experiences, uh, some lessons learned and some scars. And from what I heard this afternoon, I just want to, you know, a safe and reliable playing surface. It goes back 20 years for me. Um, in my previous school district, we spent four years studying safe and reliable school districts. And it was clear about reliability, this notion of safety. And in one of America's great college towns at the time, I went through all the data and research, because people would come every week to talk about it. And we ultimately were one of the first school districts in the country uh, to implement artificial turf surfaces. Now that school district has them at every school. Um, I thought I was done with that, and then in 2011, I came here and restarted the whole process again. So I just would, uh, because it's come up again, I just want folks to know that, uh, there is a debate about the sustainability and the safety of athletic turf fields. And from multiple, many perspectives, it, that debate has been, is done, and it's deemed to be safe. So I know the research is going to come back forward. I just would say I've looked at all of it as well. We've made very conscious, specific decisions to do what we've done. And, um, if we need to engage in that conversation again, I can dust off the research and engage in a new conversation too. But I will tell you, it's complex, and it will take months of debate in great college towns like ours. But ultimately, we've made decisions in the best interest of our young people. So, oh, yeah, she made that, right? Uh, something else has come up and has emerged, and I want to, we wish to just share with the board and have you think about it and give us some direction. If this is something you want us to stop talking about, we will stop talking about it. If it's something you wish for us to move forward, we will do that as well. Um, going back last spring, I believe, uh, there were conversations at our state level locally and here in our school district around the solar eclipse in April the 8th. If I'm, April the 8th, and what we school districts would do. School districts across our state all are doing some things, people are doing different things in different areas. Some school districts have elected to take the day off. Some school districts have elected to have an early dismissal. Some are creating instructional programming around the opportunity, but want all young people in, in, in classes. We at the time and throughout most of this school year had decided we would be in session, and we would organize instructional programming around the rather rare occurrence. And we've been engaged in conversations about purchasing, can I call them goggles or glasses? Which one is it?
Glasses.
Glasses, all right, because I was calling a goggle for a while, and people kept looking at me. Um, but we had been, we were, so we were planning to go forward with the day of instructional programming and make sure our young people are safe and then supporting them in this endeavor. I am coming to you, this is, I didn't think what I have to come to you, but we're coming to you this evening to think about maybe an alteration in our plans. Uh, we have seen a significant number of folks who are planning to be off of work that day. The staffing of our school district will be a challenge for us. Um, that was something that was unanticipated. But maybe I should have anticipated, but I did not. Uh, but now that we are seeing the numbers come in, it will be a challenge for us. What I did not anticipate, which I'm happy to report, is we haven't had any snow days. I know some folks are not in that place with me, but there, we have not had many snow days. And we have looked at the numbers, and we will be coming to you at some point to make an adjustment to our academic calendar because of the not having a snow day. Uh, whether that would be want to use, uh, not go a day at the end of the school year or do something in April or May. So we were planning to come to you anyways. So it presents an opportunity for us. Uh, we've also heard from parents, some parents wanting young people not to come to school on that day, wondering if it would be an excuse, the absence. So we, the, uh, the traffic has increased. And so we're here to seek some direction from you about which direction you wish for us to go. Um, and, or just to share some thinking, but again, this is no recommendation. It is just our thinking at the time and to share with you some updated data and information that we've just received.
I want the day off.
Supposed to go last.
Comments? Thinking?
Just for a little bit of context. Just for a little bit of context, uh, there's, uh, right now in our absence system for just Ithaca High School alone, this is a month out, right? We have about 14 to 15% of staff are, have already indicated that they will not be here on that day. That's a month away. Uh, and that's 15%, just the staff at the high school, right? So that's pretty significant, and we anticipate that that could, that could grow.
I really want to say something, uh, because I, this was presented to, in an email, to Sean and, and I, Sean and me, excuse me, um, as board officers. And, um, I, I have real concerns about this. Um, first of all, in Ithaca, the eclipse is visible from 316 to 329. Our elementary students will already be out. Our secondary students will be in the last period of the day when it's happening. And my big concern is that it really puts a burden on caregivers, particularly at this fairly late date. Um, to say, and the previous week is a vacation week. So you would be asking caregivers to have another day where they have to provide for their children. And I'm puzzled because I know that all of our employees' contracts include prohibitions or limitations on being absent for a personal day following a vacation. That the ITA needs to have approval to do that. And the other contracts just outright say you can't do it. So, how is it that people are saying, I'm not going to be here?
So, uh, no one needs approval to take a sick day if they have an appointment on that day.
So suddenly, a whole 14% of our folks have appoint, medical appointments on that particular day. Did they state sick day, or they're, they're going to be out? We don't know what they're taking.
So again, sick days are people's days, and you can take them for illness, for personal illness. You can take them for doctor's appointments, et cetera. So I, I, I second Moira's concern with, I mean, I don't understand the dynamics of taking days off, but we already have the 10th off, we have the week off before. So it would be the 8th off, go back to school the 9th, the 10th is off, and then two more days. But it's more that I think of the students and the structure, especially those that have nowhere to go, who will miss out on a lesson about the eclipse because they're not going to be in school, who might not have the glasses and might do something silly. I, I, I'm really against the fence on this because of the hardship it's going to create for a lot of people. Um, and because it's so last minute. So I'm actually curious what the students have to say as well. And I, I'm just very curious.
Well, before the students say, because this is a small population of the student body.
Well, before the students say, because this is a small population of the student body. So this is a small population of the student body. I know that there was discussion across New York State last year. I didn't know then. I know now that there was discussion across New York State about this, as well as we've been receiving quite a few feedback on let's talk for next year's calendar. How many days out are we going to have our students in school to learn? Or every other month, there's, there will be a holiday, so it's quite challenging. As stated, that after recess the week before, and then there's a scheduled recess on April 10th. So, um, yeah, it's quite, it's quite challenging, and what guidance do you have? Or you're looking to us?
I'm looking, I, we needed the public conversation.
Yeah.
There's been a lot of conversation around this topic, so I'm happy we're engaging. And again, this is not a recommendation, but a proposal to consider.
I, I share the concerns up here. I think it's too late to make a decision like this. And I share the concern about the surprise day off for caregivers. And I think it's ill-advised, especially since just about anyone who really needs to see this can get out an hour early with parent permission or whatever, and do it. Unless you tell us that you're not going to be able to staff the schools. But I suspect that what happened is people were asked, would you like the day off? And they said, sure, as opposed to, would you use a sick day?
We didn't, we didn't ask anyone this question.
So where did the 14% or 18% come from?
That was just in our system, already entered.
Requested.
And requested.
They've already requested that day off.
Yes. Already indicated they will not be here.
And, and you have serious concern?
I do. I would not have asked you to engage in this dialogue if I didn't think we would be challenged to staff our buildings. Now, we could staff our building, and it could be, it would look different. But direction from you tonight is what we need, but because as you've seen, we're getting a lot of questions and feedback. Folks want us to re, raise this question again.
Yeah, maybe, oh, just a few more things maybe for consideration. Yeah, I mean, I would be concerned if a lot of teachers were out, and also, you know, whether or not we would be able to get substitute teachers is another question. Because, so, you know, we don't want to have a day where, you know, there's so much staff that's out, and then the staff that's there, you know, is getting taxed. So I'm a little bit concerned about, about that, you know, and some safety concerns. I think a couple of other things for consideration, there are, you know, other schools in the area that have decided to cancel. I think Lansing made the decision that, that they're going to close their school. And other schools are, are doing that, so I, I think that there's a little bit of precedent. I'm not saying, anyway, just for consideration. I think the idea also, just to, just to talk about a little bit, that there's, you know, that there's this path of totality where, you know, if you drive a couple of hours outside of Ithaca, you can, you can drive to a place where you can see the total eclipse, whereas in Ithaca, you won't necessarily be able to see it. So I think just from a logistic perspective about what's going on, I think people are imagining, not that they just need to get out for like four minutes at three o'clock, but that they would drive a few hours away, and they would go and have this experience, which is kind of a once in a lifetime experience to see this sort of thing. You know, I also share the concerns about, you know, some, some of the, you know, the inequity, and some people will be able to go and do that, and some people won't be able to have that adventure. So we were having a conversation earlier, Garrick and I, just sort of talking a little bit about like what opportunities there might be in like after-school programs or other community-based programs, and how Ithaca might partner with some of those programs to, you know, make those opportunities better, like providing, helping them provide transportation or things like that. So I'm just adding to the conversation a few other pieces of things to think about.
Okay. You guys are not really going to approve a day off. That's clear from the discussion. Right? Okay, we're, we're just, we're going to take that assumption. What if we just, the elementary school kids will already be out? What if we just end the period early for the high school and go on an assembly schedule that day? So that we can actually like go outside and watch the eclipse? I think it's a. No, I meant by that time. So.
The issue is, is staffing, you know, so. That was, that was my suggestion, but what we're hearing is that there won't be enough staff in the buildings.
Right, but if they, if the staff know that they have seventh period free to go watch the eclipse, second, sixth period, sorry, ends at 2:48, right? There's still time to like drive to maybe a place with a nice view like Sunset Park and watch the eclipse.
I, I think the dilemma is more so that the full thing isn't visible from here, and people are making a full day trip of it, which does, I think the effect on staffing is really the only big concern, obviously, as you guys were saying. But a lot of people are making a day trip of it, so it's hard to say, oh, you would be able to see it for the however many minutes it's visible from here. I don't know, 15 or whatever.
I think regardless of the logistics, if teachers, if many, many teachers are going to be out all day long, regardless of what time the eclipse is and how people can go and see it. I think, you know, if we have a large percentage of staff that aren't going to be there, it's just, it's just a concern.
No, go for it.
Can I ask a question? Is it, say that it was 15% at every school, is it definitive that we wouldn't, if it was 15%, we would not have enough staff to cover classrooms or?
I, I think I want to be clear, not having enough staff to open school is not what I'm saying. But it will be a challenge to have a normal school day with what we're already seeing, and which can get more intense by the time this happens. Again, we made the decision last year to go in a direction, and we were going to be in school. And please know, I've been receiving the feedback from folks since then about wanting us to be out. So we've held firm. I am struggling coming to you right now with a proposed change. But this is an emerging issue. So I'm hearing some things, again, some direction from you tonight is what I would wish. I'm hearing a theme, but I would also like to clarify that a bit because it would help me when I'm responding to hundreds of emails tomorrow.
What would the timeline look like if we were to consider it? Because I spoke to someone who leads an after-school program today, and they said, whatever you decide, just can you just let me know ASAP so I can know if I'm.
I was thinking, thanks for that. I was thinking after tonight, based on what we hear, we would put something out to our community, we would work with communication, we would email our folks, we would put things on our website like we do with other calendar shifts. And the board comes back together in two weeks, we would then ask you to vote on a proposed change at that time.
That seems really late.
I agree, but that's why tonight's conversation is important.
March 26.
Yeah, tonight's conversation will be important because we would be pretty much, this is.
And it's ripe for a break too. I would propose you get the feedback, but next week we have facilities, and we have a special voting meeting between facilities and.
Get the feedback on whether or not, typically, we put a, a calendar in front of our community that's pretty much been decided on by our board. And we ask for feedback on the pending decision and vote. I would caution us about just opening this up, because we would have folks asking for two weeks off, closing school early. So I kind of, I need, you either want us to do this or not, and I hate to be that definitive, and.
I thought you just said that you were proposing getting feedback.
We would get feedback on the pending board decision to vote on April 8 being off. Right, okay, maybe I misunderstood. I thought you asked us just get feedback in general on.
No, no, just this, whether we, the board should vote in favor of taking this day off. So, but just have the vote come a week or.
Got it.
Can I ask a question that might help? I, I just keep thinking of, is there a way, you know, it's after-school programs will function if we were to say, okay, April 8 is off, we're going to have staffing shortages. I'm sure a lot of students are going to be gone anyway, like I, my kids, I already plan on pulling them out sort of thing, right? I know it's going to be different, anyway. I wonder if we can look to offering after-school, like full-day care. Okay, I'm not explaining this well, I'm so sorry, y'all.
For after-school programs.
After-school programs that are open on the 8th, that will then, like you were, someone was just saying, they were asking, if they're going to be open to provide childcare for students that aren't in school that day, can we be sending home flyers for parents to be able to enroll their kids for that day who are not normally enrolled? I know, but because that offering, my students at Northeast have that offering over a certain break, and that might help alleviate some of the burden on caregivers, so they don't have to take a day off work.
I love the, I, I think we're going to be challenged on time. That would be coordinating with multiple after-school programs, they may have staffing issues themselves. We could make that effort, but I, I don't have much confidence that we could pull that together.
I don't have any confidence in that, because we did have someone from an after-school program asking us, when are we getting the 24, 25 calendar out? Because that program needs to plan now for next year, so everyone plan based on this calendar. So to ask them within a month's time, I don't think, yeah.
After-school programs are, their staff works after school, not all day long.
No, no, I mean, but when they're on break, a lot of them, a lot of this, like CHS and Northeast, they do have day programs, right? So that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying, like I'm just, if we have to do this because of staffing shortages, is there anything that we can offer caregivers and those students who don't have anyone at home who are going to be left hanging and alone at home?
And, and that does exacerbate the inequities, because the after-school programs are fee-based. And we say we would be offering it, and would we be staffing? Great conversation to have. I'm just struggling with how we can have that within the matter of a couple of weeks.
So, so, yeah, I just, I just want to like have like any one stuff like that. You originally, I would have to put in half the opportunity to like experience this except for in schools or getting the classes through school or whatever that may look like. And, you know, I think we're just talking about how after-school staff work after school. Maybe that's something for elementary schools at least that could still be an option in a way, even if school didn't end up happening. Or connection with another program that wants to take on making that more available, or maybe that's giving out classes before we even go on vacation or being able to pick those up in some way, because I do think that that's a very genuine concern, and there's a lot of kids who are also probably looking forward to be, being able to do that with a next school and would get that opportunity otherwise. I think that's good for.
I just wanted to say, I'm sure that many people are already aware, but I risk increasing it many times. I did want, just want to emphasize like the importance of this event, just not for like students, but just for everyone. I mean, the last total solar eclipse in New York, like I didn't even believe this when I saw it, it was in 1925, 99 years ago. So like, you know, I've heard from at least one of my students that, that they're, they're not going to be in school that day because of the eclipse, and, you know, like, I cannot find a single part of myself that wants to play with it. But I, it's the first total solar eclipse of not only my lifetime, but like their lifetime too. And the next total solar eclipse in New York is going to be in 2079. That is 55 years away. Like, that is a very, very.
Thanks, Sean.
And, so, yeah, I just wanted to, just to mention that we, that we want to get in over the fact this is literally like a once in a century or like once in a half-century event, and that's weird. It is so amazing that we are here in this moment in time and we get to experience this. And, so, yeah, I mean, you know, I would probably not be in school that day, like, it's, I'm not going to see another one until 2079. I'm not going to miss my opportunity, um, so. So, yeah, I mean.
So maybe we'll have plenty of staff.
Because students want to be here. Now for excuse absences that day, right?
I was going to mention as well that if those numbers, like 18% or whatever, of teachers are calling out of school, that may also reflect a lot of students who are going to have their parents pulling them from school, which may offset the troubles of having less staff in the building if there are also less students. Maybe.
I stole your comment, sorry.
So what do you need to know from us? I'm apt to say, don't care.
I need to hear that. That would help me. Again, I'm the one answering hundreds of emails on this topic, in this talk. So having direction from the board can sort of end this conversation, and people can just be mad at me for the decision that's been made. Or happy about it, I don't know, but right now this community is grappling with, yeah, the community, the community is grappling with what to do. And there is a real issue around staffing. With this much lead time, we can, as teams of school leaders can work through what the staffing challenges will look like. This won't be the first time we've had staffing challenges over the last four years. So we can work through that if the board is pretty tight on having school operate according to their academic calendar.
Well, I, I have another question, yeah.
Go ahead.
On April 10th, recess day is no school. What, can we switch the days? Wait, because this is not connected to that one.
Right, I know, but it's.
That would be a. It'd be a modification of the, modification of the calendar. It may create some of the same issues we've just discussed.
I mean, caregivers would have already taken that day off. I mean, you're still in the same bind, whereas you're not covered on the 8th, right?
And let me be clear, I'm in favor of us being in school and have been. Just want to make sure our entire community understands the challenges we're going to be facing, and we move forward. We've done hard things before, like a pandemic, alright? But if there were strong feelings on our board to make sure we're out that day, I just needed to hear it, and I'm not hearing that. Unless someone proposes that as a motion, and there's a second in their discussion, otherwise we'll keep it moving.
So I'm reminded, I think Dr. Brown, you said that, you know, show me the perfect calendar, and we'll, we'll set it. So I understand that there are caregivers for whom canceling school is going to be a real challenge. I understand that. But at the same time, we canceled school at LACS, what was it, a month ago, because there was no electricity. We did it with a couple hours notice. And so, I, you know, given that we're facing a excellent point, you know, once in a lifetime opportunity for people to see this, and we're saying we can't because we're only giving people a month's notice. But when the electricity goes out, we cancel with hours' notice, and somehow people find a way around. So again, I'm not trying to be insensitive or callous to the needs of, you know, the imposition this puts on caregivers. I understand that, but at the same time, I myself would be two hours away watching the eclipse. And so it's hard for me to say to a teacher or to another parent or whatever, that, that they shouldn't do the same thing that I intend to do that day, and I'm absolutely going to watch the total solar eclipse. So I, I guess I just don't quite see what's the harm of, of, of using one of our snow days to allow people to take advantage of this opportunity.
We've had a number of snow days in years past, like, that get announced that school is going to be canceled at like 4, 5 o'clock in the morning. And it's like, it is, and I kind of just feel like having a month of notice in advance is, is way better than having just like, I don't know, like three hours. I feel like it is, is quite substantial, in my opinion.
I mean, yeah, it, it sounds like there's a lot of, I mean, when you think about what the day is going to be like, and you think about like the number of students that are going to be missing school. I mean, and just to like add to the mix, it's like I have two kids in school, I mean, I just, I also, you know, I'm going to not have my kids go to school that day, because I, I, I think it's a great opportunity for them. So like, when I think about the number of students that are going to be out, and you start hearing about the number of teachers that are going to be out, you start thinking about the difficulty in getting substitutes. You think about the attitude of the kids in the school being very excited. Like, when you imagine the day, like, it does sound like it has the capacity to be a very chaotic day. And for that, you know, emotionally chaotic or whatever, logistically chaotic. So, I mean, from that vantage point, it's, it's, it seems like possibility of canceling is a consideration.
I, I'd like us to get exact numbers when we think about the number of students that are going to be out. We don't know, we don't know. We have a representation here of six students. That's not the student body. I appreciate you all, but you are not the student body. And I just want, yeah, I just want to, and we have parents up here too, and we're not a representation of families out there who are struggling because they have to be at work, and they can't easily take off. Whether it's three hours given and an hour, three months, it can be a hardship for families. So we have to have some sort of consideration around that too. And we saw in, if everyone looked at. And we saw in, if everyone looked at their emails, we're already being asked next year, why are there so many no-school days? And when are we going to make sure our students are in school studying? So it's going to be a great opportunity for those students who are here if we're, if we plan it out and it's an educational opportunity for them.
I know what you're saying too, that, you know, what we're hearing about when school is called off on short notice, those are emergencies. You know, it's not a choice. And apparently, students and parents, caregivers feel very clearly that they have the choice to, to not be in school that day. So, uh, so people have a choice. But if we call off school, those folks who need to have their kids in school have no choice.
Can I, I guess I have a comment. I wasn't going to say anything, but I'm down with the, I'm down with the exceptional nature of this event. I hadn't thought about the years until it was pointed out. So two issues, there's staffing and there's learning. Ultimately, like, I don't care what happens as long as it is a learning opportunity. But for everyone involved in this community, I'd like to see us seriously consider giving as many people as possible the chance to witness this once in a 50-year event. And there are parents who have issues, as Karen said, with, with needing school for childcare, right? So they can do the things they have to do. Maybe those people can talk to their employers and make it a day for them and their children to experience this incredible event.
Hi, um, okay. So what if we just try to poll the number of students that are actually going to be in school that day? Like, does a decision need to ma, be made without data? Because I can speak for myself, I just learned about this, but I'm not going to be in school either. So, I'm not, um, but we will be more than happy to send out a Google form.
You guys can do it for LACS.
Sure. We'll see how many people are in schools. We can make the same survey and send it to the principals of the elementary school. But if few students and few staff are going to be there that day, I don't see a point in closing and removing that resource from people who need it. But I also don't see a point in preventing those of us who, like, maybe, I don't know, I'm a senior, so like, I have a little more leeway, can go and really see the totality of a once in every 99 years or once in every 50 years respectively occurrence.
Yeah, um, just piggybacking off of that, I think that a good balance would be having this event be an excused absence for students. I don't know what the ramifications are of that or like how doable that is just based on law or whatever. But I think having the opportunity available, like Lucian was saying, for students who wouldn't have the ability to see this event otherwise, as well as also accommodating people who are taking the entire day to go see the entirety of it, driving a couple of hours to see it. I think that's kind of the best of both worlds. And again, like someone was saying earlier, the balance of students being out should hopefully combat the teachers being out.
A complex issue with no obvious solution. And I hope for our community, this has been fascinating because this is how we grapple with tough decisions. And ultimately, a decision is going to be made and half of the community is going to be upset with me. So let's just be clear, this conversation about an excused absence is one we are still grappling with. And frankly, needed to be here to make a determination on that. So I will be asking respectfully that we spend more time even deciding on that piece. Because again, half of the people will be upset by, based on what I'm going to say there. And I don't know if we're any further along than we were 45 minutes ago. But again, I hope if, if for nothing else, we model how we, transparently how we're making tough and complex decisions. And when you're upset about the decision being made, you recognize that there's a lot of thought that goes into it. So, yeah.
So.
One more thing then.
Yeah, please.
I do worry, I do worry if we leave this up to gathering data over the next week or two or try to organize a way to mitigate how challenging this will be, we will lose time and it will just make it worse. And I get, I, I am asking then for a resolution or a, a motion to have the calendar move forward and on our website as something to vote on at the next meeting or not. I think if we don't move it forward, people will know. But if we move it forward, then we will get feedback and we will have to make a decision next week from our perspective or later.
That's. Can I ask one more question just that will help? I mean, are the glasses ordered? If this day were to be off, would there be a way to get those glasses to students? And, and some sort of like sheet to explain what this is and that it won't happen again until 2079? Like a, like a sheet lesson plan with the glasses so everyone can experience it in some way?
They were literally putting the glasses in the boxes to ship them to us when we called and asked them to hold because we had seen the lengthy, bless you, number of absences. They're shipping from Texas. If we do not have school on that day, the comptroller is very clear that that would be a gift of public funds if we distribute something purchased with taxpayer dollars for non-educational purpose. We don't have school on that day, the comptroller says that, then it's not educational.
We're not in. There's at least some speakers that are coming towards March 25th.
That's not how the funds work.
We're not, if we are not in. Hilarious. Like a comedian over here. It's amazing. Amanda, if you would like to jump in at any point. A gift of public funds means that we are giving students or staff or someone a material that doesn't have to do with the learning that's happening that day.
And we can risk, I will speak to that. If we want you, if we get audited, you get written up. Or like, these are the areas that get publicly written up in the audit report to say the district knowingly did this, and so just be clear, right? But that's what that means. Give it a couple of months. We also know that those are against the laws and which we follow. So if we then, one, we really need to be confident that this is the one we're going to then. Because as your business official, I would never recommend you then in New York State law.
Thank you.
Sorry.
I'd like to propose a resolution. Whereas, Dr. Brown has requested that we give him a sense of the board as far as altering the school calendar. And whereas, we have discussed this in great detail, looking at pros and cons. Therefore, be it resolved that the board recommends to Dr. Brown that we maintain the schedule as it has been. What's the word?
Adopted.
Adopted, thank you. I was thinking propagated, but I think adopted is probably better. So that's the resolution. The resolution is that we keep it the way it is. And people can, this way we can vote and people, Dr. Brown's heard our discussion. So, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Katie.
Now, a little further discussion because I thought Dr. Brown was asking for something different. For us to essentially have a resolution that says we will have a special voting meeting a week from now and we will put this to a vote. Or am I wrong about that?
I would, and I hate to be the one in this spot, asking, informing your resolution. But I understand what Jill is proposing. An alternative would be a resolution asking for us to modify the academic calendar. Period. And then we will put that on next week's agenda to be voted on. Therefore, people will know we're seriously considering modifying and they can get feedback over the next week. I think there's a subtle difference there. But if not getting enough vote for that resolution, then it's back to where Jill was.
Because it's usually easier to barre feedback on a change versus, look, we changed nothing. Tell us what you think about.
So I'll, I'll withdraw my resolution.
Can I entertain a resolution along the lines of, be it resolved that we are going to modify the calendar to have April 8th as a day off? And that, that resolution will be voted on next week.
And then we can get feedback on my calendar.
Would you still, would you still like us to design a quick survey to ask the student body whether or not they'll be here for the eclipse? Okay. We can send that out tomorrow.
Dr. Brown and Ms. Tal.
The resolution has passed, yeah.
Right, okay.
All right, so we need a resolution.
Okay, and then we'll answer that. So.
That wasn't the, was that the resolution?
I thought it was a resolution.
Oh, I, I was saying I'd entertain one along that, those lines, but.
Jill, can you do it again?
No, I won't. You do it.
Karen, can you do it? Nope.
Resolution?
No.
I guess, I, I, whether it's today or next week, I would like to hear from our bargaining unit partners. Whether, whether, if that's okay, whether they want to say today or next week, but I want to hear from that.
Well, we have a representative.
I can speak for mine.
Okay.
I, as I've been watching other school districts boards make this decision, knowing that a number of our teachers do not live in this school district, I am increasingly concerned that the number of staff who are going to need to be absent to care for their own children because their school districts are closed will increase that number. And as someone personally taught in school in the height of the pandemic, I think that it is very hard to really understand how difficult teaching in extraordinary circumstances will really, really, really short staffs are. I do not feel confident that if we maintain school, the staff who remain will be able to provide an educational experience for students worthy of a once-in-a-lifetime experience. I think it will be triad maybe sitting for that. That's just my, without, I haven't surveyed everybody, but I know that there are numerous districts that are closing and those people are going to take care of this.
Thank you for that, Captain.
Thank you.
That's been insane.
I just quickly designed a survey and sent it out while that's still connected. Send it out to school tomorrow.
Let's hold off on that. We have to figure out where we're going right now. Nobody seemed inclined to make a motion.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion to modify the academic calendar, which will be voted on in the future.
A second.
Okay, so. Yeah, so all in favor? Everyone.
So to be clear, this will give us, this gives us the chance to garner discussion, feedback, and then it would be actually voted on next week. Now, in, in soliciting feedback, can it be made clear that this is not? Do you know what I mean? Like the, the binding absolute wish of the board? I don't know how to straddle that.
That would be precedent-setting as well. So we will get started on communications that will go out as early as this evening or tomorrow morning, that the board has voted in favor of modifying the academic calendar to include this day off. We wish to have feedback on that pending decision. But I, I would struggle as superintendent, putting out a communication saying, well, this is not binding. That would just be a tough one because the resolution didn't say that.
Is it before the vote occurs, like?
Yeah, but the resolution.
The board wishes to seek feedback?
That wasn't part of the resolution though.
Part of the resolution was that it would be voted on.
In the near future, but the board is in favor of modifying the academic calendar is what I thought I heard in the resolution. So us saying it's not binding or the board hasn't made a final decision is what I was trying to get away from. Because that makes it for a weirder communication. I hope that makes sense, y'all, again.
Because I thought I was voting on essentially having a discussion that would say, this is a consideration that we'll go, that the board is going to vote on next week. The consideration is whether or not we cancel it. Can we get feedback?
I, I, I just didn't hear that in the resolution.
But I mean, we're voting to modify it next week. So we literally have a week to hear feedback. We can vote yes or no or abstain on Tuesday.
Right, but the danger is a communication going out saying the board has passed a resolution with the intent to modify, right? Like, giving the impression that, right? That it's, that we deliberated, we decided, yes, we want to, we want to cancel school. Now we're getting feedback versus we're just thinking about it.
We can work on the language too. And this will be precedent-setting, but I can also, as we're talking about it, know that this is a, an emergency situation. So I'm thinking about a paragraph or a couple of sentences that says the board wishes to hear feedback on this modification. Something around that line, to make sure folks know, we want to hear your feedback before the ultimate vote.
Yeah.
And we can share the wording with the board prior to it going out, make sure y'all are comfortable with it.
Yeah.
I think I have much more direction now than I had before. And I think we have a path forward. All right? And I will also take the heat for whatever people are upset about because it's going to come to us. The board is just giving us some direction and we're going to give you a recommendation that can be voted on.
She has Sean right here.
This is the longest superintendent update of my career right here.
Okay, so now we're on to school district business, which includes item 9.1, revenues and expenditures, budget communications. And I believe we are going to have Amanda Verba come down and speak to us about this.
Hello, everyone. For the use of you that don't know me, I am Amanda Verba. I'm the chief operations officer for the district. I am not going to be talking about the eclipse in any way. I'm going to be talking about the budget. This is, again, a process that builds on itself, right? Every single time we come together, there's more and more information. So for those of you that were waiting for that night when it was spreadsheet-heavy, this is your night. I know, Jill was super, people are excited. I could feel the energy walking down the stairs that those of you that really wanted that, you're, we're here, we're ready. So there are really just two topics that I'm going to talk about, but really a lot of information. And tonight, I sort of see this as just letting you know what is available to you. And again, just like we talked about, we have more time to be able to discuss this. So tonight is just, I'm going to introduce to you three more pieces of material that's going to be really important. I want to remind everyone, we are still in the budget development process. Dr. Brown has not come forward and recommended officially the school district budget, but we've been building this together through the finance committee meetings, facilities committee meetings, the board meetings, right? And so we have a lot of reference information for everyone on the website. When you go to the website, budget development can be found in lots of different places. You can actually find it probably, I think, five different places that you can click on to find budget development. And it will drive you to the area of the website that has these red bars across it. Each one of them denotes a meeting that we had. So there's probably, I don't know, 10, 12 different red bars there. Each one of them denotes a meeting that we had, so there's probably, I don't know, 10, 12 different red bars there. When you click on that red bar, a dropdown comes down. Above the videos of those meetings are live links to the materials that were shared at those meetings. Next to those materials is the minute marker or hour marker when those materials were discussed. So that way it's easy for you as a community member to go on there and find the information. Our website is really, I'm so proud of the work that we do and how that really is a one stop shop for everybody to be able to go to so that you can see that information is if you were right there in the meeting, right? So that's a little bit of the preview of the communication plan. I'll speak to that in a second. But I did want to make sure that people knew that where you could also find this information if you're not going on board docs, right? And you leave this meeting, you're like, gosh, I'd really like to look at that, you know, expenditure report that Amanda did. So in this slide, every one of these things is a link except for the title. So everything that's underlined, the three, the revenue, the three-part budget conversion and the expenditures, those are all links. And the images themselves are links. So you could actually click on that image and it'll open up and it will give you a document, right? The first, we'll start farthest to the left and work our way over to the right. That one farthest to the left is our revenue projection. The top row on that, if you click on that, and I'm not, thank you, because I think the clicker will not, it won't be able to do that. So that's okay. We're gonna, we're gonna get this. We're gonna get, there we go. So you'll see on that first, you know, bar or row across underneath category description budget of revenue twenty-four, which is the current year we're living in, proposed revenue twenty-four, twenty-five. Notice the word proposed, that is this moment in time, right? The dollar change, the percentage change, that is the first one and probably the most important one for everyone is the estimated real property tax, right? So that's what we've been discussing. This is the projected levy that we will need to balance our budget, right? So in this current year, we levied one hundred and seven million. Next year, to make sure that we have enough revenue to run the operations, we estimate that we're going to need about one hundred and twenty million, seven hundred and ninety-two thousand to run the operations. Our expenses are going up. Our state aid, if you notice, the next grouping of numbers is not going up. Our foundation aid, in fact, which is the largest component of state aid, if you notice, has gone down. Until we get the new governor's runs, that money is actually running lower than it was last year, right? The other aids that we get that are listed under the state aid amounts, just to review, are our expenditures. We have to spend money to get reimbursement. That doesn't get us whole. It gets us a portion of the money that we spent back. And a lot of that is actually based on three years prior, or average three years prior, or even, you know, 10 or 15 years ago if it's building it, right? So that aid amount is not, you know, you'll see that's thirty-seven million of the proposed revenue. But again, the real player in this is the property tax levy. The next grouping of numbers is other revenue. Emily, thank you so much for driving us, or Tricia, whoever's doing it. I just want to appreciate both of you for doing this for me. The other grouping of revenues, right, are our pilot amounts that we, that we know to kind of come on a schedule. Some drop off, some come on, so there's fluctuations every year. All the others, you know, are pretty predictable except for, I want to just mention that jump in interest earnings. I will state that at this moment in time, you know, that might be a little bit conservative, like maybe a hundred or two hundred thousand conservative. But again, interest rates are tough to tell, so I'd rather not over budget than under budget, but maybe we can squeeze out another hundred thousand there. And then finally, that gray bar across those top three elements, that's the real revenue, right? So that's the levy amount plus the state aid plus all those other revenues. That number, that one hundred and sixty-four million, although significant, would not cover the operations. So we as a district every year is committed to utilizing reserves and fund balance. Reserves are savings accounts that are for particular reasons. Fund balance is more generalized savings. And so you can see what we allocated last year. We're rolling that forward with a little bit of a change in the designated fund balance, that sort of fund balance or savings account with, you know, the no strings attached or no definition as to how to spend it. Because we did say that we wanted to try to commit ourselves from like kind of leaning ourselves off of that. That's a, you know, that's a significant number of millions out of a savings account. Specifically, if we're going into negotiations and things, you do want to be able to have some savings accounts set aside as you go into that to support the operations moving forward in the future. So there's a total amount for those savings accounts and reserves and fund balance, and that gets us to the bottom line budget. That is the amount of money. So you'll see this current operations, we estimated that would take one hundred and fifty-eight million, five eighty-eight. Next year, we estimate close to one hundred and seventy-one million. That's less, that's about a seven point seven nine percent increase from one year to the next. And as you all know, because you are living in this community, everything is up from utilities, right? We have commitments in our bargain contracts. We are in negotiations with groups right now. We have, you know, operational items that need to be addressed. I know that all of our budget developers, a lot of them have come to you already and they are going to be cycling through the finance committee as well. Next week, we will hear from special education and we will also hear from fine and performing arts. Special education, you'll hear a lot about how their budgets are driven by IEPs and 504s and the services that are required through that process for young people. I know Dr. Brown and I have done a lot of analysis around position control. Position control is sort of the art of seeing what positions you have, what positions have been created, what positions are open, what positions are vacant, right? Remember that a budget has to incorporate even those positions that are not currently filled if they are required or necessary. And they could very well be filled by a long-term staff, right? So, so right now, this is what we estimate. There's no surprise here. We had talked about this, that because we're looking at more at the rate and not the levy, I did include the tax cap calculation on there as well. And we do know that districts all over New York State, this is the year that people are not, any, any, any business official, it's almost impossible to make the district whole with that loss of federal aid, even though we were anticipating it, right? So that is why the revenue looks the way that it does. So that's the revenue. We've been really spending lots of time on revenue. I do want to go into expenditures. However, I want to pause to see if there's any lingering questions about revenue, about that levy amount that's listed there, any of the stated. We will get updates on state aid in April, late April.
Speaking of state aid, so am I correct that except for foundation aid, all of our other state aid is based on what we spend?
Correct, yep. So building aid is reimbursement, Moses data is reimbursement, transportation is reimbursement. Public and private access cost aid is on students that are considered, they're the cost of educating them instead of the threshold and you get some of a reimbursement back on that net set in years prior. And then software, library and textbook aid, that's the amount of money as well as hardware and technology that the state gives you to spend on those particular items, okay? You can always spend more, those are actually in the budget. Great. I'm not going to go too much into the three-part budget, the actual, the middle one. That's required by law. You actually have to show your budget in three different categories, right? Program or instruction, capital and administration. And so this is a required document. It will be in the, it'll be in a chart form in the mail or like a more of a pie chart. But in the budget presentation document, that's quite a large document that has all the backup documentation. This will be in its full capacity. And again, this is what we have proposed at this moment in time. And so you can see again, as we've, as we've discussed over and over, what I love about this chart is you really can see that the dedication of our program dollars, right? And how much money we actually spend. If you think about the rings around a student experience, the closest rings to a student experience, that's where everything is being driven. And then secondly, you'll see that it's the capital or the environment in which those students learn is the second biggest ring. And then administration is the third. And people are always surprised when you look at administration, what makes that up? It's more than just central administration, but it's also like legal services, right? And the PD pieces as well, that is part of also the staff experience. So it's not just administration, like when you think of a salary of someone. So that's the three-part budget.
So question. Amanda, Dr. Brown, and our communication specialists know I've been after them to come up with something even simpler. We've done a fantastic job of educating each other. And for folks who are willing to go to the website and peruse our budget documents, the essential data we're trying to get to is all there. But as the august leader of this committee, I've had no less than fifty questions over the last week or so. Once the announcement of assessments going up. Just today, I was having a meeting with some people and three extremely savvy, extremely wealthy people walked in and interrupted and said, why are you stuck on sixteen point two-two? Right? And I understand that Dr. Brown hasn't even presented a, an actual budget yet. But the question is, for folks who understand it, if things are going up in the sky, why are we holding and not continuing to come down? Why is it not, because we've come down from what? Hell, I remember it was twenty-seven percent back in the day when there weren't as many cranes in the sky. And I've tried to explain this in the simplest words possible, but I don't think that's enough. So I'm going to stay on this idea to get a plain illustrative document, not a text document, right? That explains the, the benefits of people having their value go up for their homes. So when they go to sell it, that's not the same seventy thousand they paid for it fifteen years ago, right? Trying to explain to folks that we have done a pretty good job in this district of adding services, even though our expenditures have been roughly three percent every year, right? We are adding things. The city and the county are not. They're taking things away as the taxes increase, right? So I can say all the things I want, but there are some numbers in here, Amanda, we're just gonna, you're gonna have to help me get to a clear way of showing this to people, right? One example on this chart, if I were to show this to my questioners, they'd see the percent is twelve point fourteen, right? The percent of estimated increase from the property tax. And without having the knowledge that we all have, they would say, well, why isn't the tax rate twelve? Right? Those are, those are, those are. One woman in the email that I think everyone saw said, why isn't the tax rate one percent, which made my head explode, right? So we are doing our job. I'm just asking if we can try yet again to do a one, two pager without this much data and numbers, lots of pie charts that say there's an average of what's going up, right? Because seven point seven nine percent, we haven't seen an increase like that in a couple of years. Here's what's going up. Here's why we're trying to hold the line. Here's what we're providing to our kids and here's what we might lose, should you vote this, should you vote against this budget? And, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm not the one to come in here hysterical with my hair on fire. I'm telling you all, these are real conversations. And as soon as people hear the assessment, even though Jay came in here and told us, he does the assessments in box, right? Thirty-two thousand parcels in this county. There's no way in hell the county can assess all of those a year. Once anyone hears that their neighbor got an assessment increase, everyone's hair is on fire.
Yeah, Mr. Harris, we, that would be our leadership challenge at our next board meeting. My job, I mean, fortunately, you've hired educators who have spent their careers differentiating. We're going to need to differentiate this conversation for folks. Everyone I've learned already needs something different. Some folks want datas and a lot of charts. Some folks want a story. Some folks want a chart. Some folks want something different. And we will have to do, we will have to serve all of those needs in the coming months. Because this is unprecedented for me in my career. I was asked to keep our tax rate low and if possible, to keep it flat. And we are going to show you how we've done that over the last fourteen years. For the first time in my career, we've been asked now to respond as a school district and taxing authority to the assessments. That's new. And if responding to the assessment, I was taking the advice from the assessor who was here to say, show us a budget that will maintain a tax rate for multiple years. So I do, without stealing my thunder in a couple of weeks, I'm planning to present a budget that will hold a tax rate steady. Now, I have not been asked, nor would I, I'm going to tell you, right? I'm not thinking about recommending us lowering significantly our tax rate. Frankly, if we were to lower our tax rate to where the tax levy is, it still would result in most folks in our community having a tax increase. We could lower our tax rate down to fourteen dollars and some cent per thousand, which is unprecedented for this community. And because of the new assessments, folks will still see an increase of their tax bill. Now, I hope to show you, based on the recommendation for tax rate that we plan to propose, the difference between fourteen and sixteen, I think that will be a number for folks to consider. Because what we're proposing is a way, well, one, we're going to hold space for the frustrations and emotions connected to this conversation. And at the same time, hold space for the, the very statistical strategic conversation that needs to happen as well. And I do see them as different because when folks see those increased assessments, there should be an emotional reaction. When folks see the kind of inflationary increases in our budget and across the world, there should be an emotional reaction. When folks come in here, as they've done the last few meetings, and ask for more staffing, significantly increased wages, more support, there is an emotional reaction because folks want that. So we are going to hold space for those wants and those wishes and those feelings. And at the same time, show very strategically, as Ms. Verba has done so thoughtfully over the last few years, how we can do all of that. And we will maintain a tax rate that we feel is acceptable. We will significantly increase our staff wages, what folks have asked for for decades here. And we will make sure we have a plan that will look like our building's being maintained and upgraded over the next decade. That's bold and aggressive. And I'm saying folks are going to have feelings about it. So hopefully, because of the ways in which we differentiate via images, stories, data, books, that folks will see why. But I am also prepared because I've already felt it, unlike any other time before, the emotions connected to this argument as well. And then we're going to be in yet another situation like we started, a complex situation with no obvious solution. And no matter what decision we make, many people are going to be happy and many people are going to be upset.
Yeah. These conversations have made me emotional and with my diplomatic tactful manner, efforts, I've managed to say to people, we've survived a global financial collapse, a global pandemic, a lead crisis in two of our extent buildings. And I went down the list and said, when those things happen, gap elimination adjustment, when the state came in and snatched our Biggie bank, none of those folks were around to write us additional checks. We had to bust our asses here to keep from dismissing dozens of teachers like our neighbors, right? That's where the conversation goes. That's another emotional piece, right? We are, as unpaid volunteers, except for the lovely chicken salads, doing our best to keep people's property values high. Because woe the day when our district's academic reputation tanks, the taxes are still high and people's property value sinks, right? There's a lag time for that. Those, those things aren't parallel. They don't happen at the same time. So that's an economic conversation, having a conversation about the, all of, again, all of the things that, as a new board member, I was surprised and I'd like to go on a limb and say, some of my colleagues who are new are surprised. What we have to provide to our babies in addition to teaching and learning here is extraordinary. And that need is only going to increase because our students are becoming more complicated, right? All of these things, to Dr. Brown's point, you articulated that wonderfully. These are stories, right? I still, my instinct is still, let's get something on paper, simple, as simple as we can, that will help people whose hair is on fire see what we're trying to do, right? Simply, I don't, I'm not trying to make people feel better. Dr. Brown said, I'm not sure I can make you feel better. If your new assessment is a hundred and sixty thousand more. Dr. Brown said, I'm not sure I can make you feel better. If your new assessment is 160,000 more, you have to write that check. My goal is just to allow people in this community to ask better questions. We're supposed to be highly educated. Questions I'm getting don't indicate that.
Amanda, just clarification question for me. When, when Mr. Franklin was here, he said, single family homes would increase, I think he said between 20 and 30%. Mine, full disclosure, mine was 25. I was right, right in the center. So I think a lot of people are thinking, well, then the school district holding tax rate constant is in for a 25% windfall increase. But the number here is 12. So strikes me then that there's some not only changes in assessments, but there's a redistribution in the allocation of tax revenue between single family homes, commercial, residential and commercial business, right? So it, it'll be interesting to, to get some grapple on that a little bit, you know, that, because it, it does seem that, you know, in the, in the lottery of property taxes, that single family homeowners have gotten the short straw and, and other folks have gotten the longer straw, you know? Notwithstanding the fact, of course, at the end of the day, you, you sell your property and you know, you make a profit on that. But in the short run, it does seem to do some changes in the distribution of the tax burden that I think it might, because the people who are writing to me aren't seeing a 12% number, they're seeing a 25% number. So I think this may be at the next week at the finance meeting, say a little bit more about that would be helpful.
Well, we would have to, we would have to get that from Jay Franklin, right? So remember, I, I deal with the levy, I deal with balancing the school district budget. That's why we have those wonderful counterparts and those wonderful experts because Jay is, will give us an analysis of those tax rolls. And so what I'll do is I'll reach out to him and he can give us that, to your point. I know that other board members, I've talked to them as well. That is right. The homeowner, right, portion of the tax rolls is exactly that, it is a portion. And so when you, when Jay was at this meeting, he mentioned himself that the difference of what homeowners might see in their assessed value, but then he also spoke about the total assessed value, right? The total taxable value. And he said that that was going up about 12.5, which is in line with our levy increase, right? We're aligned, our levy increases aligned with the total valuation increase, not a homeowner valuation increase. Because there are many components to the tax rolls.
Yes. I'm actually looking at a document, I have, I have a pretty significant document Jay sent out that on one side has the tax impact range, minus 25%, 25 to minus 10, no change, zero to five, right? It's a pretty significant range with the number parcels that fit in each of those categories, right? 10,147 parcels receive a minus 25 to minus 10% decrease, right? But this is not part of the public conversation. I would, if I did a quick math, no change is almost 4,400. Above 25% for Garrett, just 1,728. So to tell our whole story as Dr. Brown laid out, we'd almost have to include some of the information from the county. And yet we're just a grapefruit inside the watermelon, right? That is the county. So this is complicated. All I can tell you is what I'm hearing, these are, some of these people own massive amounts of land and units in town. And they're like, I don't get it. Right? And it's not that they're not intelligent. This is tricky.
I just don't get it. Our property taxes going up, is that what I have here? Property taxes are increasing in a percent by a substantial amount. So the tax rate is not changing, but people's individual taxes are going up.
Because the, the value of their properties has been reassessed at a higher value, right?
Often these reassessments attack.
Every.
So every year, as home values go up.
Every year, some of them are reassessed. Not all.
So then is it like, what, 50% of the houses in this district get reassessed one year and then the other 50%? Like, is it for the sign here, we think?
See, that's, that's why we love new students. We get numbers from Jay based on the county. The school district is simply a part of the county. We have yet to see specific numbers for how many parcels that we are, that are in our universe, go up, go down, go sideways, no change.
I would also like to point out that just because home values may be increasing for certain homes, it does not necessarily mean that salaries are increasing to match the rate of risk home values in this season. So it may not be the best way to be evaluating how much people can afford to pay because like, I've heard all those stories about the grandparents who bought their houses in 1970 for like $800. And I know that's a high verbally, but just roll with me here. See that same house today is worth $4,000. They've only had a 25% salary increase. They cannot afford to keep paying those same property taxes. So, yeah, I just want to point that out.
You should go to a city council meeting and speak up there too, because, thank you. Yeah.
Listen, that's really, I mean, that's, that's a very important point. And that, that is the, and I just want to be clear, when we get feedback from people and they say that my home assessment went up 25%, but I didn't get a big pay raise. And they report that that's going to cause pain for them. I just want to clear, we hear that. I hear that. I'm paying too. I mean, it's, it's, it is a real concern to your point. And I think the trouble here is that we can't control how the, the assessment is allocated across, again, single family homes, commercial, residential, commercial, retail, et cetera. And so some of the redistribution is a little bit out of our hands in the assessment office. But just to be clear, you're absolutely right. It is a real source of, of duress for people when they see that their school tax bill could go up 25%.
And it's important to note, we are the only budget that folks can vote on. So all of these other shifts that are being made, the county budget, the city budget, the assessments, these things are done, and I hate to use this term, done to folks. We, we recommend a funding request to our community and folks can vote yes or no. And that's where we're going to find ourselves next month and a half.
Can I just underscore this?
Absolutely.
This, there was a table that Eldred was referring to just a moment ago, that was referring to the parcels that made up the tax base. And just me doing my mental math here, there are more than 50% of them that actually decreased in value. So I guess I just underscore that, you know, you asked for maybe this county level snippets of data to be included in our explanation, because that's one little tidbit that I hadn't heard in all of this, you know, on the ground chatter this week, that, you know, we hear that, you know, mine went up too. We hear about it going up, but we don't hear about, you know, the tax base being composed of all of these just different parcels, many of which went down, which is going to complicate that, you know, people are saying, well, the denominator went up. And so your numerator, if it stayed the same, your rate should go down. Right? They try to boil it down to a very simple equation, but the equation is a little bit more complicated. So straddling that, like communicating that it's slightly more complicated than a little, not a little, an article online might indicate. But also making it approachable and differentiated, like you said.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't want to, I don't want to terrify you, but one of the reasons I joined the board in 2009 was because I heard somebody say in the public meeting, to your point, in response to your point, that people's incomes aren't increasing with the capacity to pay the taxes. I heard people say, well, those folks can now take out a loan because their home value has increased. And when I heard that, I thought, oh, this is insane. We need a new voice in this community who can speak to, as Garrett said, the real the reality of folks who have to write these checks. And since that time, our tax rate has come down and down and down and down. And now people are saying it should continue to go down if there are cranes in the sky, without understanding all this math that Amanda's put in front of us.
My last point was just that when people sell their houses, they have to deal with taxes too. There are capital gains taxes, there are, don't quote me on this because I'm only 17, I have not bought a house yet, but yeah. But there are taxes, there are costs to buying the house that may be reflected in certain gains for the state, for the county, for whomever. I don't really know how all of this works. Yeah, I'm 17. That can be reflected. And I think it might be worth a speaker from the city council to explain to us exactly how these assessments are happening. Because Ithaca does have notoriously high property taxes. Ithaca is a notoriously expensive place to live. Like, I'm talking New York level. And yes, part of that is because we have two, who, actually three colleges here. There are professors, there are grad students, there are college students. But I think that we would not be doing our community justice if we did not at least try to keep property tax rates as steady as possible without like a 10% increase each year. Because if it's a 10% increase in assessment, that's what probably a $3,000 increase, just from the math I've seen, I could be totally wrong. That's a lot. That's, yeah, that, that's all I got.
If you did like a question and answer, you know, like frequently asked questions or something, I think sort of what we're saying. A lot of people are sort of saying, my taxes, my, my, my property value is now assessed at 20% more. Why do you, why aren't you lowering the tax rate for me? And I think that many, many people have that question. And that would be, you know, one question that I throw up on that sheet, you know, to, to explain to people that want to know, like, you're getting so much more revenue from my house. Why, why, why do you have to keep it all? I think that's the question that people are asking.
Yeah.
I understand the answer, but I think it's complicated.
So when we get to the communication slide, we'll talk a little bit about that. I do want to, before I leave this slide, and although we've been talking about revenue, which again, remember for us equates to the levy, right? If we want to decrease the levy, we can increase, the only other thing that we can control on the revenue document is our fund balance and our reserves. We can control the levy amount, we can control the fund balance and reserves, and we can control the expenditures. If you look at this, one of the beauties of this three tier budget or three part budget, 10 from the bottom, 10 rows from the bottom and five rows from the bottom, instruction, net of instruction, the 2999 code and the employee benefit, the 9098 code. If you do the math and you look at this, that is where the major increases are. Both of those, if you look at it, the majority of those expenses are in the program line. So if we're going to do the work and we need to look at the levy, any, any fluctuation in the levy to lessen it, that would be the line that we would be looking at for expenditures to go hand in hand if we don't want to allocate more fund balance to balance the budget. And this is a really simple, those two rows are really simplified here, which I appreciate.
You said 9098?
9098 on 40 benefits. And 2999, Eldred, it's in the three part budget, not in the, you know, the that's that simple one that's up on the screen. Okay. And so when you say those are, those are lines to look at when we're talking about expenditures, especially, that's because they changed a lot from the previous year, or that those are, that's where they
Yeah, let me say it a little differently. I will make a recommendation next week, in the next board meeting. And then we, our time will be around making adjustments, if you wish, to fund balance. Are we going to take more money out of fund balance or maintain the recommended level? Or to what I'm proposing as salary increases, because I've shared it very publicly, what we're trying, what we're hoping to do over the next few years as we're going into negotiations. So that number that I've shared publicly, what I would be saying is we would just shift it downward. And that's what we'll move those two lines there. So those are the two levers that we will be pulling if we want to make adjustments to the recommendation I plan to put before you.
So because salary increases.
Yeah, we're assuming some salary. Yes.
The last thing I will say is, Jill, I remember our conversation previously when there was suggestion that we tell the executives to do a certain thing across the board. You see how complicated this is, right? My response was, no, this is where we, this is our moment, right? To tell him to make these shifts and then hand the ball over. And it's our, it's when, this is, it's within our power. They're telling us, this is what we need to keep the current level of services and increase the pockets that we know need to be increased. We, at some point, this community might cry foul and say, we can no longer handle this. I hope we're not there yet. I frankly hope I'm not on the board when that day comes, because class sizes will increase. The roofs will start to leak again like they used to, and the buses are run for 12 or 13 years. Right? We are trying to what do dogs do in the water? We're trying to doggy paddle to keep up. There's no piggy bank in which we can stuff money, except for the reserve. And we've been, that's been snatched away from us twice. Imagine our trauma. Right? So he's made promises, we've asked him to do a lot, we're asking teachers to do a tremendous amount. And they deserve to be compensated appropriately. And they're the vast, vast bulk of what we're talking about.
Amanda, I have a quick, I have a question on the revenue slide. I'm sorry.
Revenue?
You just said we're waiting on aid, we'll hear on news about aid that we would hear in April. Can you just speak?
Sure. So, so that's the final governor's runs, right? The state aid run. So we have preliminary state aid runs that come out in January. And then you have final state aid runs that come out in April. You all know, you've been getting information through your associations, right? About some of the pressures for the governor to essentially increase foundation aid, which is the formula aid to school, school districts. That one was really, I think, a shocker for a lot of people that would, that went down for some districts, a couple million. For us, you could see it's about 100,000.
And so, and so whatever happens in April, it's not reflected here at the moment?
That is correct. So that could, that could increase or it could stay the same.
And in previous years, if the budget had been adopted by the board and/or at times where the community had voted on a budget, we would adjust the amount we took out of fund balance. If, if more revenue came in, we would take less out of fund balance. Because right now, we are leveraging fund balance, our piggy bank to balance this budget. I just make sure, we need to make sure that the community understands that.
And I get the impression that it's not of a magnitude that is causing us to fold our breadth.
Or, I don't, I don't think 100,000, if it was, let's say it was brought up, you know, 100,000 dollars.
That was, but that's, that's the extent of the max.
Even if, if it was a million, right? I mean, we're, you know, we have a, we have a sizable budget. It will be, all that will be helpful. But I don't think that it's going to, you know, again, to our discussion, it's not going to be moving massive needles, right, one way or another, but it definitely would decrease our fund balance.
Thank you for the realization.
So the last chart, all the way to the right. I think last year, we were asked to try, and again, this doesn't exactly align with that three part budget, because as you notice, some of, some of these expenditures are actually categorized in multiple ways, right? And so this is our best attempt at trying to carve out what mainly is in the program budget, what is mainly in the capital budget and what is mainly in the administration budget, and put that together for you. Again, I would just want to reiterate, the numbers will not match. Each year, we try to do more and more, both in those red bars that go across, that give descriptions of that category of budget codes, right? Those function codes, if you've been to a finance committee, you know, the function code is those first four numbers of a budget. And so we try to give both an explanation of those function codes and what falls underneath them, as well as under each of the type of object code, which is salary, supplies and materials, equipment, right? Non-instructional, instructional, contractual, BOCs. Anytime that there is a fluctuation that someone might go, gee, that's a really high percent, up or down. Gee, that's a really high dollar amount, up or down. We try to give an explanation in red so that you can see it for the line item directly above it. And sometimes you'll see like something, you know, will decrease, but it's actually not a lot of money, right? So we may not give it, like if it's a couple hundred, but it really is, it shows up as a 75% increase, because it was only $75 a prior year, we're not going to describe that, right? We're going to describe the tens of thousands. We're going to describe, um, the, the tens of thousands, um, of, of things. This is for your review, because to try to go through this and to discuss this, this really needs to be um, given to you for you to be able to mull over, mark up, you know, take some notes. Finance committee is happening next week. That is when we always really go deeper in, a deeper dive. You give us questions. That is also the time when we have the full executive team at the table, because a lot of these budget elements are based on their conversations with staff and with students and caregivers and building leadership and budget developers. And so they have, you know, more information than Dr. Brown and I, although we're pretty well informed and we could probably, pretty dangerous, but a lot of these are, are based in, um, many meetings that lots of us are attending at any given time. So just so you're aware that that is, that will be talked about, um, next week. And then just the quick slide on the communication. Right? So Emily, again, thank you so much.
Before you
Oh, yeah.
Let me just say back to folks who do not follow this, can't believe, and they have time to, or do not have the skills to do so. There are two numbers that are absolutely critical for everyone to understand. Revenue projection, the last line, the percent change goes up 7.79%. On the expense side, the last page of the document, the last line, says our expenses after we do all the minuses and pluses is 7.79%. Right? You're not hiding money on the blankets here. Our staff is working their tails off to manage a 150 million dollar organization with 14 buildings, 5,800 some odd kids. Those are the two numbers that matter. We can still shift those numbers. But at the end of the day, those numbers have to match. Whether it's coming from, uh, our, our, our feedback, so to speak, whether it's coming from state, whether it's coming from property taxes, those numbers have to be the same. Not because we want it.
And it gets required to get a balance.
Required, and those numbers do match. I'm sorry.
No, I'll just thank you. So again, I just to reiterate, that which you're looking at is expenditures, what it costs to do business, the operations. Right? That's the money that we pay in payroll, benefits, bills, and utilities, and all of the things that make us operate. When the budget is adopted. And for that endpoint is, that will happen in mid-April, right? Prior to that, Dr. Brown will, will hear all this feedback, will do some more work, we hear some more budget developers to explain their areas of the budget. He will put forward a budget that he can recommend, you will adopt it or not, right? Um, but a, a budget must be adopted by mid-April. Right now, as I already mentioned, the website is active. We're, we're putting all of any historical data that we are talking about at any meeting right there on the website, along with those videos, and all the presentations and all the materials. We also will add elements like, um, more active and robust let's talk information, people will be, and they're already starting, right? Sending in information through let's talk, and we're responding to that individually. Um, and also, we take those questions that are coming from let's talk, we don't identify anyone, but we, we we create them in such a way that they're generalized, right? And then we put them on the FAQ page. That FAQ page usually goes live after the budget is adopted. Although there is information that we can do ahead of time, and Aljo, I think that's what you're looking for. We can try to get some of that information up in advance, some of the generalized information, what is an assessment, how does assessments work, right? Does the ICSD control assessments, right? What is the ICSD? Those sorts of things we can do. Um, but that FAQ page is going to be really kind of the, it's not static. It will continue like every, feels like every couple hours, we're adding information to that, and that's rows and rows and rows. Um, we'll be doing the insiders, we'll be doing finance committee meetings and community conversations. Two are, um, on the books, they will be dealing with both the budget and the capital project. Um, that will be happening as well. We'll have a budget hearing that's usually in, um, early May before, I think it's again, seven to 10 days before the budget vote itself. There'll be a mail newsletter. There will be reports in all of the main offices in the school buildings, as well as other municipal offices. And if you invite me, I say PTA meetings, but I've, I've been, I've gone to IPEI meetings, I've had coffee with them. We can go to community groups and we absolutely can speak to the budget. Um, so, so this is sort of the communication plan and how folks can engage, right? Um, I do know, and I want everyone to notice here, that nowhere did I say, please email the Board of Education. Right? Because yes, you will adopt the budget, but we are, we are the workforce that have put it together for you, and we will educate you as much as possible. But really, if people can put information through let's talk, then the staff who actually put together the budget along with the board can actually be informed together and work together to really steward the responses factually. Right? And so that we know that, um, because we'll have information that you may not have. So it really is helpful for folks to use that let's talk portal, um, and, and to streamline that communication. That also gives a metric for us who can measure sort of our, how quickly we respond, and that's important as well, because we want to make sure that we get those responses out.
So all this looks like this is fantastic, and Lord knows this is 700% of what we're experiencing. And there are folks who still would consider anything of their own making. But, uh, question I have is, have we avoided social because of its toxicity and thus put Facebook aside? X, Twitter, TikTok, YouTube, is, are there ways that you can even further expand, given that the investor now in
Yes. Yeah, we, we have a pretty robust Instagram feed now. Um, we are, we, we have Facebook. Um, we haven't explored TikTok for a number of reasons I'd rather not get into tonight, but, and we have sort of deactivated our approach to X, formerly known as Twitter, but we are using social media. If there are folks who consider this old media, I would ask for them to give us recommendations on what to use. In lieu of those other two I just mentioned that we probably won't engage with.
Thank you very much.
The time, thank you.
When we have Amanda here, or, uh, we, we, this is a related question, but it's, it's not, so you brought up, we will not know if we're going to have school on April 8th until next week, is that
Right.
Right? Uh, so there's possibly we may have school. Anyway, it's undecided at this point. So if we do not order the eyeglasses now, uh, I'm sure it'd be becoming too late and then us putting students' health at risk, so I, it's not a finance question, but I'm just concerned about student health. And making sure we don't lose the opportunity to get them, because of just not making a decision.
I, I mean, I, I know that Lily would be wrong in the ordering. I guess the question is if we didn't make a determination, a determination next week, can we still have time to order the glasses?
Yeah.
Great.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now, guess what? We get to talk about calendars again. Item 9.2, it's the calendar for next year. And of course, this will be the perfect calendar, right?
99%.
Uh, we don't have a paper copy on this, I don't think. No, this is, yeah, this, yeah, so it's, um.
I have snacks there next to Caidman.
Okay, Ms. Talke, what can you tell us about this draft of next year's academic calendar?
Yeah, so next year, I'm going to talk about, I think this honestly is the most, I've been doing this for about six years. This is the most I've ever talked about calendars here. Uh, but it's, but it's good, honestly. It's, I think, good, good conversation. Thank you. So as I mentioned last time, and for those of you who are watching later or are watching at home, my name's Lily Talke, and I get to serve as the deputy superintendent of schools. We started months ago, working with our union leaders and the great expertise of Lynn Klankowski and Emily Tracy Arm. I stepped out for just a moment, uh, to check and double check and ensure that we are both following all of our contractual agreements and also New York State law regarding the number of days and minutes to be in session. We also take a look at our history around ensuring that we are as inclusive as possible with our calendar, and it's really important to not strictly focus on, um, Christian-oriented holidays. Um, and so you'll notice that there are a number of days that are recess days throughout our calendar associated with this. Uh, this upcoming year, in addition to this past year and previous years as well, and that was really through years of advocacy from our students. And you'll also notice that there are some specific vacation or district conference days that are tied to the BOSIs calendar. Right? So our spring break is the BOSI spring break. We ha- we welcome a number of students across both campuses who engage in programming either through career and technical education, et cetera. Um, and so deviating from those school breaks and from the, um, district conference days becomes really challenging for students. And the district conference days also become very challenging for us as a district in order to access the expertise of our region. Um, I'm sort of giving you all of that background so you ha- you know, sort of get ahead of some of the questions that ca- that have already come in in relationship to this calendar, right? Some of the questions have been, why are we having so many days off um, at, at different times? Um, and, you know, they may seem random to folks who don't, um, celebrate any Muslim or Jewish holidays. And so that's, that's sort of why, to help people understand that. Um, and some people asked about different breaks and shifting those, and asked about shifting some of the conference days. Um, and that, that again, becomes really challenging, given BOSIs and questions or other things that you, like me or Dr. Brown or others, to address.
I just have one.
Sure.
The, the February break, my understanding is that that is rooted in back in the seventies, the energy crisis, but yet we still do it. I don't expect us to change it next year, but I wonder, um, and this is something that came up in another meeting, and I don't even want to bring it up tonight, but I just need to, you don't forget. Um, with climate change and things changing, and the fact that we get out of school right before July, is there ever an opportunity to advocate for that February break, like on a state level, to just end it? Like, is there, is there any benefit for the February break for our school district, for our students, for our teachers?
I would say the years when, many, many years ago, when I was, I was, I was a teacher at NCIS, uh, we had a shortened February break. Some of you may even remember this. It was, uh, before your time.
I know.
Uh, and it was wildly unpopular, to put it mildly, you talk about staffing shortages and morale. So, uh, that certainly is something that we could re-explore. Um, but I, I, you know, I think you're wise to say at a state level.
Right.
Uh, and, um.
But it's not a state mandate. Yeah, spoken as a true Virginian, um, this was new to me too. Um, so I did check, this, this by school district, and there are many districts in our state that do not recognize a February break.
But there is a national holiday on the Monday.
Yeah, that's the, yeah.
It need to be a regional discussion, I'm sure. Again, our, we have students who attend TST BOSIs in the high school or LECF for part of the day, and so not having school at one or the other always presents challenges.
Understood. And, and again, this isn't for next year, but I, I was being interested to see what other districts, regionally, how they felt. I'm all for the little breaks throughout the year, you know, it's important to recognize those holidays, even though technically we're not supposed to, but that week is brutal, and getting out at the end of June is brutal. So, uh, I mean, there is a way to change it.
The end of June is determined by the state saying the, this is when we're having region's exams.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And the beginning of school is dictated by New York State. You can only have students start after Labor Day, as per state law, unless we have a, we have special dispensation through a waiver.
So with all that information, that means that we would have those five days to take off anyway. So
It's very likely.
Okay.
Well, I don't know, um, if spring break, um, next year is going to fall on the same week as Cornell's spring break. But for all of those years, we've had residents complain, why could we not match the spring break? I want to say thank you, not that you've, but this year, we're matching the spring break with Cornell. So hopefully people will send in some accolades and say thank you to that. I don't know what it looks like for next year.
And I will remind folks, because Professor Bradwell is not here, there are two major institutions of higher learning. Um, and they rarely align their academic calendars.
So, so maybe, I mean, I, I appreciate that ex- the explanation of all of the factors that go into it. I think that context is really beneficial. So I guess specifically because we have an aligned Cornell and ICSD sort of this year, but we don't next year, if this is the, the calendar we adopt, can you just maybe, so there's a soundbite as to why? If, if there, then there might be not one reason.
The soundbite won't be popular with folks, depending on which higher, which institution you're connected to. But it's allowed me to survive this long. We do not build a calendar around the academic calendars at either one of the institutions, period. We build it around the guidance from the state, um, connecting with our TST BOSI. We have to build a calendar that will meet the needs of our young people um, for the reasons we've shared, and we do not. Now, that, I stopped there, because anything else gets into a debate, and I never, I haven't won that.
And very specifically, the spring, BOSIs adapts their calendar before us. They decided when their spring break is. We follow suit.
Correct. Yep. Another question we received was regarding half-day conferences at the, um, at Pointon, DeWitt, and Ithaca High School. And those half-days are strictly due to the minute requirements and the outline for the year. A consideration for the March date, so we see the 13th is the second conference, caregiver conference day. If for some reason we happen to have an additional snow day floating about, it's possible that we could extend that out, um, to be a full day, right? We know that's ideal. We know that's ideal.
And another comment that came a couple of times was the possibility of switching the October 25th District Conference Day to November 1st to follow Halloween.
Uh, I totally understand that. I will say, El Dia de los Muertos was always a little tricky as the first grade teacher, right, the 1st of November. Um, and And now as a parent of two young children. And the twenty-fifth is a regional conference day. So children throughout our region do not have that, have school on that day. So ICSD students who attend TST BOSI's do not have school on that day. And then they would be expected to attend on the first. It also speaks to what I was talking about earlier around, so those district-wide conference days, there are times when we collaborate across the region. So all of the science teachers across the region get together, or all of the PE teachers across the region get together. And I know, you know, we're the, sort of the biggest game in town, right, in the region. And yet that collaboration across our region is extraordinarily powerful for, for educators.
One last question. Election Day, it's a general election, but I see we have school that day. Is that normal? I can't remember.
That is normal.
Question two. Or one is a comment for folks who are asking about, you know, how many days off we have in a day here and a day there. A couple of them were state, state, came from state mandates. Juneteenth became one two years ago. And then this year, for the first time, the Lunar New Year has become a state holiday. So those two got added.
And now, if you are in the New York City Department of Education.
Right, that's correct. And another question I have, though, is the, the calendar outlines regions' exams in January and June, but it does not indicate whether there are classes in all of our schools, some of our schools, you know, what that means for classes.
Thank you. So at Ithaca High School, the last day of classes is June sixteenth. It sounds like you're suggesting that we add that.
Well, yeah, it would be clear. And what about January? Or is Ithaca High School in session on region's exam days?
No.
No. So I think it's important for people to know that Ithaca High School is off, does not have classes those days.
But all the other. Parenthetically, we could just say Ithaca High School knows, IHS knows.
What about LACS? LACS, it's middle school, right?
So LACS does some really interesting stuff. There are, I was wondering when you all were going to ask. So LACS serves 265 students currently. And there are caregiver conference times. And there are, sixth graders have to attend during region's weeks due to state mandates, and other students do not. So it's very nuanced. And we can take a look about, you know, how to incorporate all of those on this as well. I will say that there, you know, we have received some feedback in the past about, you know, this is, this is confusing if you're at LACS because it's, it's different. So I do, I do understand.
Can you tell us about October seventh?
Sure.
It's a fifteen-minute, it's the fifteen-minute early release day.
Yeah, so us, in New York State, every school district is required to practice leaving early.
Yeah, I remember.
So is it on the same day throughout New York State?
No.
Oh, it's different.
Whatever day we want.
Right.
It's usually a nice sunny October day.
But yet in downstate, downstate New York, they have off Election Day, right? But yet this whole disconnect between upstate and downstate, because I piggyback on, off of what Erin had requested about that. I've heard from some staff members before saying safety in, like, schools when you have election polling places in the school with students. And why do we have, why do we still have to have it on?
We, I mean, we could extend the school year or cut into a break.
Well, we can't really extend the school year. That's a region's exam.
Show me the perfect calendar.
Yeah, Professor Bradwell's brought up each year the need for Election Day to be off. And I agree. I also agree that we need to move into the February break, but I know how popular that is. I knew Catherine was going to look at me when I said that. So anyway, the trade-offs. We do, it's because we still do, it's good Teachers Week here. I mean, so it's, it's complex.
I said one more question. If you're, if you celebrate a holiday that, that didn't make it onto the calendar, and you're kind of wondering like, oh, like, how come my holiday didn't get included, but this other holiday did? I guess I was just kind of wondering, it's a kind of a broad question. I know it's getting late and maybe we want to push it to another time. But like, what is the criteria, you know, that, that makes it so that maybe one holiday does get on a calendar and one doesn't? And I'm not saying that as a criticism, but really it's just a question. I understand everything can't be on the calendar, but somebody could be like, well, why, you know, why not this? But this one got on, like, how, how does that actually make the cut? I was just curious.
Yeah. No, it's a good question. And if you'd like, I'd, I'd love to send you some previous board meetings from many years ago, where we've heard from students, where they actually collected data from students to understand what the largest, what they termed religious minorities were within the, the school district. And so their proposal was essentially what we have, what we have gone with based on information regarding young people that they surveyed. It's actually not, you know, with, with like, very few exception, you know, Erin was correct. There's, you know, with, we have to sort of thread a needle in terms of saying this is off specifically for this religious holiday, while also recognizing that there's some, there has been some case law that indicates that we may be on slightly wobbly ground in relationship to that. And so we're trying to do the right thing while also staying in consultation with our attorneys to, to understand our community and be as responsive as we possibly can within sort of these bureaucratic limits.
Are we good to go? So we will be voting on this.
Two weeks. We'll get you more feedback.
Okay.
And you, you did say you were able to respond to those people who gave that, the, the feedback into the portal they get a. Fair enough.
Why do we never feel good after that conversation? I want to feel just happy.
Okay, we're now at nine point three, and we've got several resolutions. One, two, three, four resolutions to be moved and seconded and voted. So the first one being a seeker resolution, this is for our capital improvement policy.
I move to approve the resolution for the capital improvement project of various school district buildings and facilities.
Second. Questions or comments?
I guess noting for public that we've spoken about this previously, a necessary part of the capital improvement process.
Okay, all in favor? Everybody who's at the table? And then we have yet another resolution.
Motion to approve the resolution authorizing the construction of improvements to and reconstruction of various school district buildings and facilities in and for the city school district of the city of Ithaca, Tompkins, and Tioga Counties, New York, in a maximum estimated cost of $125 million, and authorizing the issuance of $125 million bonds of said school district to pay the cost thereof.
Second. Do I have a second? Second. Thank you. So moved by Jill, seconded by Erin. Is it, yes, thank you. Questions or comments? I do have a question myself. Should it say, I guess, a maximum estimated cost? Should it, but should it say authorizing the issuance of up to $125,000?
Because is the estimated cost $125 million?
Yeah.
I guess I would just, you know, say for clarification for people is that we will not necessarily borrow $125 million. That we can only borrow $125 million, not a penny more.
And, and that's why it says the maximum cost, so we expend up to.
Yeah. Okay, so all in favor? Everybody? Another one?
Motion to approve the resolution specifying the necessity for the construction of improvements to and reconstruction of various school district buildings and facilities in and for the city school district of the city of Ithaca, Tompkins, and Tioga Counties, New York.
I second.
Moved by Jill, seconded by Karen. Any comments, questions? Okay, I'll call the question. All in favor? That's everybody at the table. And then finally, resolution item number nine point six.
Motion to approve resolution calling 2024 Annual District Meeting and Election of Ithaca City School District and Authorizing Related Matters.
Second. Moved by Jill, seconded by Erin.
So this is the May fourteenth budget meeting.
Yeah, it's, it's, we call it the meeting, but it's actually the vote.
It's the vote.
It's the vote.
On May fourteenth.
May twenty-first.
May twenty-first.
So they call it the annual district meeting, but it actually is the budget vote.
Okay. Hearing, then vote on the twenty-first. Excellent. Thank you.
So all in favor? That's everybody, Adam's back.
But Eldred is not.
But Eldred is, but his code is stuck. He's in the building.
Looking for.
He has not left the building. Maybe. Okay, now we have some policies, many of which we should be able to get through quickly. But the first one, because the, the policies nine point eight through nine point twelve, these are all for second reading and adoption. But the first one is for discussion. We're not even calling it the first one. Somebody going to, Lilly, going to come down? Yeah.
All right, here we go. LACS policy. We are formalizing the practices we have had in place for a number of years, making sure that it's super clear and transparent, if I may, for the community regarding the ways in which and when we accept students into LACS.
We had some discussion last time, policies regarding special education numbers. I'm scheduled to send an email to you all at 8:00 AM tomorrow. The number is for you. But on that committee, as you can see, that it's around twenty-three percent. Population friendly, and we're meeting with our attorney to discuss that. Over that two, fifty or fifty-one percent in any of our settings.
You know, what we talked about last week is that, though there has been for a long time a practice to enroll students at LACS, which actually changed over time due to legal rulings. We haven't yet actually had it codified in policy. So that's where we are now, where it codifies what we're doing and have been doing for a while. And one of the things that we do not do is in selecting students for enrollment at LACS, which we used to do in the past, is to consider factors like IEPs and gender, ethnicity. We cannot consider any of those categories that are, remind me what they're called, protected, protective classes. So we cannot, that cannot be a factor in the process.
Experience from the question I was about to ask.
Yes. Yes. The only thing we do consider, other than an absolutely straight lottery with all of the applicants in the pool, is the feeder schools that they're coming from. So that we don't have an incoming sixth grade class that is, you know, half kids from one single elementary school. Because it would not be in keeping what we're trying to accomplish in terms of the, what happens, happens within the class. So, so they have a process that I needed to have explained how it works for providing balance among students coming from our various eight feeder schools.
Just note, because it's the academic economist to me, but the notion of how to allocate scarce resources is a problem that we've looked at. And lottery is the worst answer.
Yeah. Are you asking us to rewrite the policy?
I'm just saying, you know, if anybody in Albany is listening, lottery is the worst policy.
And there are frameworks that exist to help that outside of lotteries.
All right. Okay, we'll bring it back to the policy committee and, you know, in the upcoming months, you may see it back for a second reading and adoption.
Well, we, this would be for, we didn't actually do a first reading.
Oh, we just discussed. My apologies. Thank you.
Okay, wonderful. Okay, now we've got a whole bunch of policies that should be quick, right? Dr. Brown?
I was feeling better when I was looking at the clock that said seven. My computer, it's at eight thirty-two.
And I made a change this last time about program fees, regular day school programming, all curriculum courses. And then we add as well as tutoring and alternative instruction.
Right.
And remedial courses shall be equally available to the Ithaca City School District. No fees, monetary or otherwise, should be charged for the courses. I also checked that this is a state, a state mandate as well.
Okay. So can I get a motion and a second for second reading and adoption?
I move to approve policy six two five three.
Six two zero one. 6201.
No, no, 6253.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was looking, oh, well, actually, the boldface says 6253, then the motion says 6201.
That does.
Okay. All right, we know what we're talking about. So Katie knew what she was talking about, so.
Okay, I move to approve policy 6253, program fees for second reading and adoption.
Second. Moved by Katie, seconded by Jill. All in favor? Everybody who's at the tables? Yes. And, okay, now we do have the actual 6201. It's Memorial Funds. And then that is a mandate. This is Berba.
This is, this is about as easy as it gets.
Right, right.
We're really just changing essentially the fund in which this is held.
Right, okay. So, can I get a motion?
I move to approve policy 6201, Memorial Funds for Second Reading and Adoption.
Second. Moved by Adam, seconded by Jill. Comments, questions? All in favor?
I like that, kids.
I'm getting a little punchy. Okay, and then we have, Dr. Brumman.
It's like a little bit bad.
So the order of this is to give Dan a little exercise.
Right. So this is 6701, inventory tracking for ICSD. We wrote it so it connects to new policy that we already approved to communities go since 2010. And it's tracked, inventory control, it's tracking.
I got a motion.
I move to approve policy 6701, inventory tracking for ICSD for second reading and adoption.
Second. Moved by Adam, seconded by Jill. Comments, questions? All in favor? That's everybody. Karen's back. And now we have Zach, Lynn.
Hello, everyone.
Hello. Policy 8330, authorized use of school owned materials and equipment.
Yeah, so we went through this policy a couple of times. The main shift here is the adjustment of the value, which is losses occurring above 500. We didn't want, you know, holding a lot of our staff formulas for instead of losses of, you know, amounts like that. And then shifting in language regarding device usage, sort of acknowledging that, you know, folks will use computing devices in so many different capacities. We're sort of broadening the term.
Can I get a motion? Motion.
I move to approve policy 8330, authorized use of school owned material and equipment for second reading and adoption.
Second. Moved by Adam, seconded by Erin. All in favor? One more.
All right, 8332, it's sort of a parallel policy. And the main shift here is looking at cell phone usage and how they may be used, acknowledging that it's not just going to be like calls and texts, but, you know, we're going to be using it for multiple purposes.
Get a motion.
I move to approve policy 8332, the use of cell phones for second reading and adoption.
Moved by Adam, seconded by Erin. Question, question, Jill?
We started talking about a year ago, maybe more, in the last budget, about the cost of this required, these cell phones. Are we making any progress in decreasing the number of people who have to carry them? Or maybe discontinuing this process?
So we're definitely taking a hard look at, you know, which employee groups and roles we want to issue a device to or, or, and, and usually what it's going to come down to is if we have existing tools that can be used to communicate the message or families, then we're not going to issue a device. If the nature of someone's job is, you know, mobile, they're not at a fixed phone, but they're asked to take calls all the time, then yeah, we probably will issue a device. So we've been sort of just sticking along those guidelines, but we haven't made any huge drastic shifts. But a lot of that has to do with just the nature of our communication pattern.
How many district cell phones do we have out there?
Um, I don't have the specific number at this time, but, you know, we're probably looking, probably close to 100 or so.
And, and I, I appreciate that on the second sentence in the policy says such phones should be provided only when a less costly alternative is not available or is not appropriate in the circumstances. So we trust that you're doing your due diligence to make sure.
Yeah, I can, I can say, matter of fact, we definitely had instances in this time where we told folks, no, here's these other tools.
I'll share my experience with this. This was years ago now when I was the district's behavior specialist. And I was told that I had to have a district phone. And I, at the time, didn't realize what I considered to be the horrific costs of, of these things. And I'm just wondering if there, if we could explore whether there are people who would be just as happy using their personal phone as I would have been rather than carrying another phone. Or people who might be happy to just have some sort of signaling device saying that they should call such and such a number.
A new, new thing coming up, you know?
I'm just saying, it's a lot of money. We do it year after year.
What's our, do we know approximately how much we spend every year?
Amanda?
You know, that's asking a lot.
How much do we spend on the cell phone, the district cell phones?
So we can think about magnitude wise.
Okay.
Say, 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 last time, you know, eSIMs.
So are you, what is, what is that?
You could, you trade the number, but people use it on their personal device. So they don't have to carry, to your point, they don't have to carry two devices, but the, the number can be me for one week and someone else for another week and on a personal device.
Okay, we have this moved and seconded. So, all in favor? That's everybody. And Eldred is back with us. Okay, thank you, Zach. Now I will entertain a motion to move into executive session.
I make a motion to enter into executive session, talk about the employment history and of a particular individual. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Moved by Eldred, sort of, and seconded by Adam. And we expected to be, we'll come back. Okay, sorry, thanks. We have to vote going to the executive. All in favor? Everybody, thank you. Thank you, Jill.